So, good evening and welcome. I'm Natasha Spada. I'm the Vice Chair of the Needham Planning Board, and I'm calling the March 19th, 2024 Planning Board Meeting to Order. Adam Block is not with us tonight, the Chair, and neither is Paul Alpert. But this meeting of the Planning Board is being conducted in a hybrid manner consistent with current state regulations and is being recorded. And then all the materials for this meeting are available on the town's website, needhamma.gov or gov. I'll call the world for the record. For the three of us that are here, when I call your name, please say you're present. Artie Crocker?
Present.
Jean McKnight?
Present.
And Natasha Spada, present. And the staff is also here, Lee Newman and Alex Clea. So, our agenda has changed. And so, for tonight, for a couple of reasons. One is that we don't have four members in attendance. And so, our original agenda had two public hearings tonight. We will only be having one public hearing. The first one was for the tennis courts at the high school, and that has been moved to April 2nd due to the lack of the four members. And so, the second public hearing is for the Planning Board Recommendation to Amend the Zoning Bylaw for Solar Energy Systems, and that will occur at 7:45. The other piece of part of the agenda that we are not, that we don't have enough quorum for is the decision for amendment to major project site plan for Needham Farmers Market. So, that will also be moved, is that true, Lee?
Yes.
To April 2nd. So, we will begin today with the A and R Plan for the property located at 25 Ridgeway Avenue and 10 Evans Road.
I would suggest that we begin by opening the public hearing on the high school, and then they be voting to continue it to April 7:45.
Okay.
I move that we open the public hearing on major project site plan review, site plan special permit for the property at 1471 Highland Avenue, which is the Needham High School, regarding request to renovate for existing tennis courts and add for new tennis courts.
I second.
Okay, so Jean moved, and Artie seconded. Any questions or discussion?
And now, I move to continue the public hearing on major project site plan special permit, number 2009401, Town of Needham, regarding the high school tennis courts.
I'll second that. And I think our vote is mainly on the second one.
Yeah, it's April the 2nd.
Yeah, our vote is actually on to move it.
To continue it to April 2nd. And do we need a time?
7:45.
7:45 PM.
Okay. And so, and you seconded, Artie seconded? Okay, so we'll take a vote. So, Jean?
Aye.
Aye.
Artie?
Aye.
And I, the Vice Chair. So, we've closed that, we've opened it and closed it.
Continued it, yes.
And continued it until April 2nd. Do we need to do the same thing for the, for the decision?
No.
Okay, just only for the public hearing? Okay. And so, so then we'll, so the next agenda item, we're jumping over to the A and R Plan for the property located at 25 Ridgeway Avenue and 10 Evans Road. So, is the applicant, the applicant, do you want to make a presentation? If not, Lee?
I can pull the plan up on the screen.
I appreciate that. I thought I had, I know I read this online, and I thought I had printed it out, but I don't, I don't have it.
I have it.
I put it online. Oh, here it is. Got it.
So, essentially, this is just basically an approval-not-requiered plan of two existing house lots where they're swapping off parcels at the back of their property, where one parcel is being, where they're, basically, it's just swapping off parcels of almost identical size in both lots. Well, one, and their one lot is pre-existing non-conforming. It has 60 feet of frontage on Evans Road, which is a private way, but it provides for adequate access to that existing house lot.
And that lot, the one that has the frontage on Evans Road, that is acquiring parcel B, and the other one is acquiring parcel A?
I can't read it right here.
If you want to?
Parcel B is the one immediately behind lot 10A.
Yeah, it looks like B is going to, and it looks like. Lot 10A and A is going to lot 25A. That's what it looks like.
It doesn't, it's not.
One of the property owners is here, if that would be helpful. It's up to you.
Yeah, it will be helpful to understand what the swap is about.
Sure.
So, come up, please, just so that you're in the mic.
Yep. So, I'm the homeowner.
Could you identify yourself?
Identify yourself.
Sure. Yeah, my name is Peter Hammer, and my wife Diana Bowser and I own both the 10 Evans property, which is where her parents live, and 30 Newbury Park, which is the one across the upper right corner of that image there. In fact, our names are on that, on the plan there. And we've had this sort of unsightly skinny triangle of land separating us from our in-laws. There is a hole, you know, there is a small passageway between the two. But so, about a year ago, we approached the current homeowner at 25 Ridgeway and asked if they were interested in this land swap, because that was sort of a wasteland for them, too. They just dumped debris there, and they have a corner cutting into their yard. So, they, after thinking about it, they thought it was a good idea, but then they were selling their home. So, then that kind of, they knew it would take a long time, and they said, well, that's going to delay our home sale. We're not interested. So, we, the topic went away until a buyer, the builder, bought it. And then we, you know, brought the topic up with the builder, and he seemed interested. I think it makes a more regular lot and more saleable lot. And then for us, again, it opens up the back property line to, you know, our family. So, that's the nature of it.
So, you're acquiring parcel B?
Yes.
And the parcel, the property at Ridgeway Avenue is acquiring parcel A? And it's, it looks like an even swap thing. It's running, it looks like.
It is. So, just looking out the window, I could see if you drew a line across that post and you could find a place where they'd trace off equal areas, and we had the surveyor find that spot, and the rest is done. Now, I think there was some details about, because 10 Evans is non-conforming, there had to be a net, you know, it couldn't be a total equal land swap. They had to gain square footage at 10 Evans. So, I think it's like a five-square-foot difference. I think that's, Alex can correct me on that.
That's no longer the interpretation of the law, but that was the interpretation at one point.
Oh, okay.
What's the interpretation now?
You can make these swaps, provided that you don't affect the non-conformity.
Sure.
That's when I think I circled back with you, and I was like, wait, I think you can do this.
One-for-one, you mean?
Pardon?
I mean, one-for-one. You can do the swap one-for-one. It's supposed to slight increase versus?
Yes, the zoning was written so, the zoning was, we, the zoning is written so that on a pre-existing non-conforming lot, you're allowed to basically add land to it. And that's the rule we were imposing. But David Tobin had to issue an opinion after that, basically saying that our zoning was too restrictive and that the case law required that we do something broader, which means that pre-existing non-conforming lots can be changed, provided that you're not impacting or making worse the non-conformity that exists on the lot.
Got it. Makes sense.
I see. I believe the plan was drawn up with a five-square-foot transfer in that or something like that. So, it seems like that. And it doesn't involve a non-conforming aspect, so I think it should still be, you know, abiding by those.
I don't have any construction. Jean, do you have any questions or concerns?
No further questions of concern, no.
No, I don't have anything.
Okay.
No, I'm fine. It's been reviewed by staff, and we're fine with the plan.
So, I move that we endorse the plan for at 28 Ridgeway Avenue and 10 Evans Road, dated February 29th, 2024, creating parcels B and parcels A. Subdivision approval not required.
Oh, I second.
I don't know if I can second.
I second.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
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 So, the motion carries, and the plans endorsed.
Now, you said you were living in one of your in-laws, you're living in another?
Nice. I know. It's lucky, we're lucky that we can work out this.
How long is, are they just moving in? Is this just happening?
Seven, eight years.
Seven, eight years. Yeah, nice. Yeah, I bought, when I first bought back in, ages ago, I bought the house next to my parents.
I mean, so nice to have family all, you know, they see the grandkids and all that.
Yeah.
That's great.
Nice.
We're lucky.
Nice going.
Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great. So, then the next item. We're not doing the farmers market, but we can jump over to the Board of Appeals?
Sure.
Okay. So, Lee, do you want to? What do we need to do for the Board of Appeals?
I need to make a recommendation on the case. I think in this case, they're proposing to put an addition on a house, an existing house to accommodate a garage. And they're looking for, I think, a variance on the, on the front yard setback.
On the side, see here, the right setback from nine foot six to eight feet, and the front setback is 15'4", where 25 feet are required.
Right.
Due to unusual soil, shape of topography of the land. And it's a request associated with the addition and alteration to an existing single-family home.
I took a drive-by, really practically across the street here. And I could see from the plan that it was kind of like at the end of a cul-de-sac. And ordinarily, it, you know, I've served in this board for a long time, and you've heard me say this many times. I hate garages in the front.
Yeah.
But in this case, it's really, it's just this tiny cul-de-sac, and it's at the end of the cul-de-sac. And of course, the abutters are notified. And if the abutters have concerns, they can raise them at the hearing. But in that particular location, and given that, I believe it is wet back there.
It's wet, and the lot does have an odd shape, which is why they're applying for a variance.
So, I think they have a justification for that. I know our zoning Board of Appeals is reluctant to grant variances, but this is one of the few circumstances where it does seem to apply. So, other than making that statement about why, I have no comment. Let me say, I have no comment.
I felt the same way. I have no comment. And I think the Board of Appeals, the zoning board, should review it.
Yes, to make the.
Artie, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I think it makes sense to let them decide what's going on without any big input from us.
Okay, so, do we need to vote on this, Lee?
Yes, you need to vote. What's your recommendation, Mr. The ZBA?
Okay, so.
I hope that we make no comment on the application for a special permit under Section 1.45.6 and a variance with regard to the property at 20 Alderbrook Lane.
Second.
Okay. Jean moved, second by Artie. Any other comments or discussion? No? So, let's take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 So, I think we moved to have no comment for the Board of Appeals on Alderbrook Lane. Anything else that we need to do on that, Lee?
No, we're done. They only have one case.
Okay, great.
Well, suppose the one thing we have left on our agenda, apart from the report of planning director, is minutes. Shall we move on to that?
I think we should move to the minutes, and then the reports, and any correspondence. But I don't believe there's any correspondence either, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so, let's see. This was a meeting that focused, at least at the beginning of the meeting, on the Needham Housing Authority zoning articles. So, I had a few highlighted places where I found what was stated.
Which one is this? January 2nd one? Sorry, which one is this?
This is January 2nd.
Okay.
Yeah, it was in our packet. So, Reg Fox Foster is made, in the last paragraph on the first page, Reg Foster is making a presentation. And then Mr. Crocker made a comment, and then Mr. Block, Ms. Newman.
We'll flag that to check on it.
Like it to not be so restrict, oh, yes, this has, this has to do with, what kind of restrictions on age. Age and so forth would be applied. Okay, Robert Smart, attorney, noted, Town Council, Chris Heep, was in agreement with no requirement to limit occupancy in terms of age or handicapped. It could be eliminated and just have the Section 1.3 restriction. And I added the words as to affordability that is in the zoning bylaw. That's what he's referring to. The, you know, under 80%, of median income, which is what in our bylaw. He is comfortable with the specific zoning. That is, Chris Heep is still speaking. Then, he does want specific reference made to all recorded documents, including affordability. And I'm not sure what attorney he meant by that. In the zoning, was he saying? He wanted specific reference made to well-recorded documents?
So, he wasn't talking back to the deed or anything like that? He wasn't referencing any deeds, was he, in this one? Or just, was it just the zoning?
And maybe he was referring to the separate article, whether the Select Board is going to be authorized to release or modify.
Yes, I think he was referring to the second article and not the zoning article.
Yeah. He just wants specific, in, in the, shall we just refer to it as the second article? I'll be more specific.
And take out "including affordability"?
Well, he did say he does want, the, wait a minute. I forget whether the restrictions that were recorded way back in the '60s had to do with affordability at all.
Let me just reread it.
Maybe we could take, if we're uncertain, maybe we could take out the words "including affordability" and just say, he does want specific reference made to all recorded documents in the second article.
That seems better to me. Because you already, you already added. Yeah, you added affordability to the sentence.
Warrant article, to be clear.
We don't want to spell out what the second article is.
In the second article, which pertains to, in a second article that pertains to recorded restrictions in deeds from the town.
I think that does it.
In deeds from the town. Okay.
That pertains to what?
That pertains to recorded restrictions in deeds from the town. Because that's exactly what the second article has to do with. So, then, on the second page, the first paragraph, first, oh, so this is good because the Select Board warrant article, I added, dealing with the current recorded restrictions. So, that's even more explanation of what we're talking about. Mr. Smart noted, Town Council's review indicated that he and Mrs. Smart were on the same page as to how it should read. The article, and then that explains what the article does. He's happy to work with the.
I'm more than a draft. That's, that's Mr. Smart.
Supposedly, the reference to he is to Mr. Smart.
It's Mr. Smart, yes.
Yes.
And then the sentence, if there are any concerns, they would use framework or the dimensional framework. I don't.
I have no idea what that is.
No idea what they mean. It seems irrelevant to the.
I would take it out.
I just get rid of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, agreed.
I know what he's talking about, but it doesn't seem necessary.
The sentence that says, in the third paragraph, Ms. Newman was treating this like an apartment district. Are they, is it, they, was it a reference just to apartment districts generally? But probably, it was treat, like an apartment A1 district.
Yes, I think it was an apartment A1 district.
Yeah. So, yes, so that change would be made if all agree. And then, on the third page, where we start now, review of the solar energy system zoning. The first sentence seemed unclear. Mr. Block noted the areas of who and on what basis the special permit granting authority should be flagged.
I think what that meant was that Mr. Block noted when special permit granting is required. Don't you think?
Noted when, when a special permit is required.
And it says that special permit granting authority should be.
The areas of who and on what basis the special permit granting authority should be.
It's a very boilerplate statement for the whole, starting the whole article.
Should be flagged. It's almost like this should be, should be said twice.
I think it should be, Mr. Block noted when a special permit should be granted. Like, what are the requirements for a special, you know, the requirements for a special permit, right? That's what he was trying to say, I think.
I thought we would, we might have been talking about whether the special permit should be for the Planning Board or the ZBA or something like that.
I think he said maybe we should, we should pay attention to the provisions of this where we were granting, where special permits were being granted. And who, and who was, and which board was being assigned that role.
Yeah.
That makes sense. But it's still, I mean, I mean, it's still a boilerplate thing. It makes sense to state that, because we need to know that.
How about it?
But it's.
Oh, excuse me.
But we should always know that.
How about if we say this? Mr. Block noted, when a special permit is required, the areas of who and on what basis the special permit granting authority would be should be flagged. Okay, got that, Alex?
The areas of who and on what basis, and then I missed it.
That, yeah, that's the wording that is there. So, I'll keep reading. The areas of who and on what basis the special permit granting authority, then insert "would be" should be flagged.
Okay.
So, that's just a way of saying, who should be the special permit granting authority.
It's still kind of a weird sentence. It's still kind of awkward, right?
Mr. Crocker stated he was not sure of the difference between A and C. I probably should just have made this change, because in the proposed zoning, it was a small a and a small c in parentheses.
Yeah. Yeah, there was an A and a C, and they were, they were virtually almost identical to each other. What they, what they should have been identical to each other in what they're saying, but they, I think there's, because they were talking about the same thing.
Yeah.
How important this is.
So, I just change it to a, small a in parenthesis and small c in parenthesis rather than capital A, because that's the way it would, I thought what Mr. Crocker was talking about was that section.
Okay. Can I bring up one other thing on the first paragraph? It says number one.
Which page?
The same page, three. Page three. Sorry, the same page we were on. Ms. Newman reviewed the bylaw and how she organized it. One, is the definition section that defines all systems regulated. Is that clear?
I think she said how she organized it.
Yeah.
You might, you might end that sentence with a colon, so it's clear that the two things are connected. Ms. Newman renewed, reviewed the bylaw and how she organized it, colon. One is the definition section that defines all systems regulated. Two defines regulations.
I would put the colon, I would put the colon, but remove the word "is" before the definitions.
Yeah, it just, it sounds, to start a sentence with "is".
It, colon, one, the definitions.
Oh, okay. Take out the word "is".
Yeah.
Two, okay.
Okay.
Got that?
I guess that it. And well, then, we'll just be the same. Three, the, just take out "are", and then four, take out "is".
Okay. Yeah, I guess we're doing, being consistent. We do that.
It was confusing.
Right.
And that's it?
All right. So, good with everyone? And so, I move that we accept the minutes of January 2nd, 2024, as redlined and with the changes discussed.
Second.
At this meeting.
Second.
So, Jean moved to approve the meeting minutes, and Artie seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, meeting minutes are approved from January 2nd. Is there, I have a quick question. We're in March. Is there a reason why we're still in January for meeting minutes? It's because it takes a long time to put them together?
It's because she's producing them at that rate.
Okay, okay. No, because if we had more for today, we have time.
To finish them, right.
Not trying to put any pressure, just wondering, like.
I think I got some minutes yesterday. I haven't really focused on them.
Oh, but it's not, I mean, it's, it's, you're always prompt.
I know, I wouldn't be trying to produce it for this meeting.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Jean, are you saying we don't have them because you haven't gone through them yet?
No.
Sharon, Jean's off.
It's on Jean, it's on.
I'm always prompt.
So I see we have 15 more minutes, and so are there any reports?
Well, maybe we can just talk about where home is.
That'd be excellent.
Okay, and because there's a community meeting that's planned for the 28th and the committee met at the last meeting and we basically decided, it could have been a PowerPoint, but we basically decided on two scenarios, the base scenario and the add-on scenario, both of which are going to be presented to, to the community. And we're linking that with a fiscal impact analysis and a build-out analysis and a propensity for change analysis, which will look at what we project the actual number of units to be built actually effectively under those two different scenarios will be presented for feedback. And we're also working on, we're getting, putting, putting together a zoning framework that would actually implement that. So the community meeting is planned for the 28th and after, to get feedback on those two scenarios, the base scenario and the add-on scenario, and to present the fiscal impact study and the propensity for change information. And then the committee will meet again based upon the information that they have, I think, to finalize those two scenarios and options that they want to move forward with, make any adjustments based upon what they heard, and put together the zoning framework. And we'll expect to get the final narrative detailed reports from the consultant to kind of accompany all that. So the committee can make a final recommendation on the scenarios and the zoning scheme. And that will happen at, there's two meetings for the committee, I think, in April, one on the 4th and one on the 25th. And the committee's work with them will be done on the 25th.
When were they presenting again? They're coming to present to the different boards.
The joint meeting. The joint meeting would be on April the 30th. And the plan is to have the material.
In the next day they sent to the state.
It's planning board, select board, FinCom, Home. FinCon, FinCom, Home.
All in the one, all the one meeting night?
Yes, on April 30th. On April the 30th.
I have on my calendar a home meeting with the select board on April 16th. Is that not happening? And instead the select board are going to be included in the later meeting?
I don't have a meeting on the 16th.
Yes, I remember hearing about that too. That's their regularly scheduled meeting and I sort of do remember there was.
Oh, now I, and now I.
That is a meeting where we are presenting our zoning articles to the select board for, that are on the warrant.
Oh.
That's on April 16th.
Oh, that's not a home meeting. Okay, I have to take out the word home. Planning board meet with the select board.
So the plan is to have the information for the community meeting up this week so people see the, see the, see the full package, they see the.
This week.
This week, to have all that up on the webpage so people can look at it ahead of the meeting and ahead of the presentation. So that will have both scenarios and the fiscal impact analysis, the propensity for change analysis, all embedded in it.
Where, where is the home, when is the joint meeting again? Is home, I was mixing up the 16th as well. When's the, when's the home?
April 30th.
April 30th.
So the meeting with the select board is yes, and the FinCom is on the 30th.
Oh, that's right, I already have that on my calendar.
So it's, I mean, it's a very, very short and tight window just because of the requirements, you know, from the state and the fact we want to get the articles and the plan into the state for their feedback. And they are taking up to 90 days to actually respond. And then we want to make sure that what we put together is going to be compliant before we move forward in the fall with hearings on the actual zoning articles and then a thin town meeting in October.
The, the hard work of putting the zoning bylaws together is going to be on, on the planning department, the month of April.
Well, actually, we're getting a draft, I think, from Emily this week on what the zoning, what those zoning, a draft of those zoning articles.
I think Eric said that at the last home meeting. He mentioned that Emily would be working on the zoning drafting.
I'm supposed to see that, I'm supposed to come into my email box tomorrow. I'm supposed to see the draft of that. And Natasha, we're trying to set up a meeting with you and Heidi.
Right.
For Thursday or Friday, just to kind of review the strategies that's kind of embedded in that, in that zoning approach. And I'll be, I'll be looking at what she's put together and sharing it with Chris Heap and other committee members, maybe that are interested in reviewing that draft.
And that draft comes to the planning board?
That draft is going to home.
It's going to home for the April 16th meeting.
For the April 4th meeting.
Oh, April 4th, okay. So there's a meeting on the 20th, that's the community meeting.
28th.
Right, March 28th. We, from that meeting, we're meeting, the home is meeting on April 4th to review all of the comments from the community, to be able to incorporate.
Any modifications you want. And to beginning, and to begin looking at the framework for how the zoning will be written and to actually implement that plan.
Right, but we're not reviewing what Emily's written because that's April 4th. That's when we're talking about the community, what the community feedback was.
That's right. Well, community feedback, we're going to look at the 4th, but we're also going to begin to see the frameworks for the zoning.
But April 16th is really the meeting where we're reviewing.
Meeting, the 16th is not home at all. That's our zoning. That's our zoning. The select board likes us to come into their meeting and kind of go over our proposals. So we'll be presenting the housing authority zoning articles, those two articles, and talking to the select board about that, and we'll be talking to them about the solar article.
Okay, so that's, that's a separate completely, that has nothing to do with.
There's nothing to do with the work of home.
So then there's the April 25th meeting.
The April 25th meeting is when things will be finalized by home and they'll vote their final recommendations, which will have, you'll have the finalized plans, you'll have the final documents, which include the plans and, which includes a complete fiscal impact analysis, a propensity for change analysis, and this recommended zoning scheme.
Go ahead, we have a few minutes because I want to bring something up about home. And this goes back to when I was first appointed. And even at that time, I knew that I was not planning to run again for planning board. And I remember at the time asking, can we change the, the vote that established the home committee so that the planning board could appoint a person rather than appointing a member of the planning board so that I could continue my service? That change was not made at that time. I, I would like to continue serving on home if people want me to continue serving.
Yes.
If people would prefer to bring in a new member, I will step back, of course. But I think we may, just to have everything squared away, it may be good to have on the agenda for April 2nd, a vote of the planning board, appointing me, it would be something like conditional upon the select board agreeing to the, the change in the composition or the way the, the committee was established to allow the planning board to appoint a person who will not be continuing as a member.
I think that's a good idea.
I think that is a good idea.
And then probably on the 16th, when we're meeting anyway with the planning board, maybe that could be done then. I mean, when we're meeting with the select board, maybe that vote could be taken then.
I mean, I think the home group is, after they submit it to the state, I think you're almost done your job.
Yeah, I guess the question is after April, April 30th, what is the role of the home group?
I know we're going to continue to the end of the year, but. I agree with you. I'm not quite sure what our role is. What is your vision?
Home group continuing until the end of the year or is the planning board then taking on creating the articles?
I think the planning board's taking on the responsibilities for the articles.
Yeah, we take it on when it comes back from the state in August. Is it August when it's coming back?
In August.
In August.
Because we're talking about holding public hearings in September.
Right. I guess, I, you know, I think we've done a good job and we're not presenting things to the state that will not pass muster, but I think the concept at the beginning was, we're sending it to the state. They may say this doesn't work, that doesn't work, and then we'll have to redraw things. And so home should stay in existence to be involved in that process. I, you know, I feel pretty confident about everything we're proposing being, you know, being satisfactory. A lot depends too on whether the supplemental zoning, the second article passes, because we've got more insurance there that everything's, you know, that we're going to meet the standard of the 1,776 units.
Right, the add-on.
The add-on, because if in our original article, if there was anything that, you know, they said, oh no, that's excluded land or some reason, it doesn't count. But I think, I think we're in good shape now, really do. I, I know back when the housing group was, the housing plan group was meeting, we were talking about rezoning churches and rezoning the library, you know, because we were concerned about having enough connection to create the acreage. But then when we had the consultants and they advised us that we didn't really need to do that, we took those, because they were questionable all along. But I think really everything we're proposing is likely to be accepted by the state.
Well, that's why we pay the big bucks.
Yeah, that's why we pay the consultant bucks, exactly.
Well, I mean, I think we came, I think we created a really effective process with community engagement and getting people's input, which is important to end up with a plan that people feel comfortable with and want to see, you know, implemented. And I think to the committee's credit, I mean, it's looking at building housing beyond what the minimum standard is, because it recognizes, I think, the need to be building housing in Massachusetts, which is where young people are actually leaving the state because they can no longer afford to live here. So, I mean, it's a crisis and that, and I think to Needham's credit, it's one of those towns that's kind of stepping up and saying, how do we do this and how do we do it in a way that enriches our, our community.
And I think we have a super diverse group also. And Jean, you've been really helpful in not only through the master plan, but also helping kind of direct some of the questions that you had during that time and in such a short period of time, because we were able to consolidate it. Heidi was also part of your group in zoning and so I think in general, it's been a really diverse group and I think that's really important. But one of the things that we do have to do, and Jean, we want to make sure that you're still on the planning board when this is happening, is there were several things that we talked about having the planning board take it on, and we want to make sure that we know what those things are and start highlighting them so that we can also look at opportunities that are beyond the MBTA communities, that it's something that Needham itself wants to move forward with.
And the second article really carries out a lot of the changes that were proposed in the housing plan. You know, we've had a concern that we did this rezoning, you know, several years ago on Chestnut Street and it didn't really result in, in much development. And so the second article addresses some of those density issues that we feel might be blocking development in these areas. So I really hope people will understand that that's part of the reasons being put forward.
It'll be, it'll be interesting to see when it hits the public and their reactions to what, how much housing is added where, where's the equity, where's, what about this area, what about that area? How much do we really need? What, does it create some inflexibility later on and what the town wants to do with what we think what's best for the town? So I don't know what's going to happen. I truly don't know.
You bring something up, but because the hearsay piece was something where people, the community felt there was inequity and we found a way of, of mitigating part of that, but also opening up later in the future, other opportunities there. So I think it's important for everybody to attend the community meetings. I think it's going to be pretty critical to get a lot of feedback. We've had to do this fairly quickly, not on, not because of us, but because the state is requiring it, so.
Yeah, and there's going to be very little time to, little tweaks.
So we're going to be listening when we hear it on the 28th.
Okay, so what better strategies? That I can stay on, but it may be, you're right, that there really won't be all that much work after.
Well, we'll see. And we'll see, maybe there's, maybe there's a role for the committee to help, you know, to maybe meet with town meeting members, I don't know. And I know Heidi had talked about meeting with each of, each of the individual precincts to educate them on the plan and the work of the committee, and so maybe there's a role there. I really haven't thought, thought about how that might be integrated. But there's a lot of talent there and people who have been involved in this process long term and to have them, you know, engaged in education with town meeting members, I think would be effective.
I agree. Okay, so anything?
Just two minutes, wait.
We have two minutes.
We've got two more minutes.
Do we have any people?
We have, we have some.
Two, two attendees.
Okay. Well, but on the other one, oh yeah, two attendees. Is that Adam? One of the attendees? Oh, on panelists? No, that's just. No, the attendees? No. Okay. So we have one minute.
Is there anything, is there anything we have, are there any correspondence?
There are no correspondence. The only thing that we had was the correspondence for the hearing that we didn't have.
Right.
Which, which I guess I could go through it really quickly and then we.
Peter, you're leaving. We're about to start, we're about to start the 7:45 and you're leaving.
The authorities about to take up some.
Fine, we know on pecking order, that's fine.
Take care.
Thank you. So just really quickly, we had.
Oh, we should, we should, no.
We shouldn't, we can't do it. Okay, okay, so we have no correspondence.
I did, I think I did include in your package just the final zoning language for the housing authority along with the article explanations. So that's as, that's how it will be in the warrant.
Right.
Okay.
And we went through that last week. Yeah, so it's 7:45. So let me just organize here.
I'd be very happy with the explanations.
So I, right, I think so.
I incorporated your suggested changes. Thank you, Jean. I always appreciate your, your comments and I always incorporate them.
So I move to open the hearing to amend the solar bylaw for solar energy systems and waive the reading of the legal notice.
Second.
Do I need to do it or do you need to do it?
So moved.
You're so moved. We've never, I've never had three people, so.
Well, it's probably second when I should have so moved, yes, right.
Okay. Do I need, we need to vote on it?
Yes.
Okay, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so I think Arti, you're going to be, Adam, I just want to give Adam credit for this. Adam Block put together this presentation and Arti Crocker will be presenting it tonight just to make sure that everybody understands what the, what the bylaw is changing and amending.
Yeah, thank you, Natasha. Okay, so we're going to be, this planning board is bringing a bylaw to town meeting, this May's town meeting, memorializing some of the, some of the, some language for solar systems in Needham. In essence, it's going to be encompassing roof-mounted systems, ground-mounted systems, and essentially solar camp, solar parking lot canopies. Those are the three main components. If you want to go to the next slide. And so some, some past history, Needham did, did put together a bylaw for large-scale solar systems going back a number of years ago, specifically related to the system that was going on line, went online at the old, at the old landfill. And, but that was many years ago now and we've never really put much thought into what bylaws should change. And so we've just kind of gone along with some people thinking they could do it and do it and, but in some cases, some commercial entities didn't do things because they didn't always know what would be allowed. So we're, we're bringing this bylaw so that people know what's, what, what can be done so there's no question mark. So we're talking about against solar, our rooftop solar for homes, businesses, and again, ground mounted system as well, related to commercial and residential systems as well. And go on to the next one. So we're, in doing this, we're, again, we're expanding the definition of what solar is and adding some, adding some categories to what that is. So again, to, to reduce any confusion of what's happening in the future, again, for any permissive uses. Next slide. So we have essentially this active and passive solar systems. Primarily what we're dealing here is going to be active solar systems, which really deal with solar photovoltaic systems, that's active. Passive is more related to, like a passive home. Windows where the solar gain is simply from the windows, or in some cases, it could be confirmed considering like a solar, some type of solar thermal or hot water system. But so we're really talking about photovoltaic systems here. Then we have solar, then we have canopy systems, which are going to be canopies, whether it be over parking lots, parking garages, or on the, over rooftops themselves. Then there's ground mounted systems, there's, we have, we've defined them by square footers. So we have a small scale goes up to 1,500 square feet, essentially of, of solar panels or the projection on the ground. Then there's medium scale that is in between that and goes in between 1,500 and 40,000 square feet. And then beyond that is the large-scale solar systems. And see other, other active systems, again, building mounted, building integrated, surface integrated. What they're really, what's really being talked about there is like surface integrated, let's say you have a, you have a, you have a sidewalk, you're integrating, literally integrating a solar system into the sidewalk, sidewalk itself, or even building integrated. The material itself is essentially a solar system, whether it be the surface of the building. But in some cases, it could be the, the roof mount, the roof system itself. But primarily, we're talking about building mounted solar system, building integrated, which is the material itself is a solar system, or again, some type of sidewalk. Next slide. So roof mounted systems, they're going to be allowed by right in all districts. Again, that's roof mounted. Then we have residential, then in residential districts, we're talking about small scale ground mounted systems. Again, we've defined that up to 1,500 square feet. We're going to allow that by right in the side and rear, and rear yards, by right at district setback. And later on, there'll be a little bit more defining of what that means. And if, and if it's in the front yard, we'll allow it by special permit only from the ZBA. If there is going to be screening required, but that'll be talking, I'll talk about it now. The screening required, but if it's at the district setback, as in the setback with the house can be, screening will not be required. It's only required if it's going to be allowed closer to the lot line, for example, in accessory structure. Then we're going to require some screening. Again, there's going to be parking canopies will be allowed, allowed by right inside its rear yards. Medium scale ground mounted systems, again, allowed by right, but with site plan review by the planning board. Then in non-residential districts, very similar, small, small systems are allowed, side and rear yard, sorry, side yard and rear yard. And then in by special, then by right by site plan review, the medium scale systems are allowed in the commercial systems as well. Parking canopies allowed, side and rear, again, by special permit. Sorry, site plan review by, by planning board. Sorry, this is where the green after the gray is, it's mixing me up. Next slide. So again, building mounted canopies, in essence, does that mean? Well, here's one visual of it, where it's literally a canopy over a building itself. It can be even defined by a greater, greater visual than what's going over here, literally going over the whole building. And we're going to allow that by right in the New England Business Center and Mixed Use 128 in the Highland Commercial District. There is one exception with Highland Commercial, but in essence, we're talking about the other side of 128. But there is a, there is some restriction as far as the distance where residential area, I think it's, is it Riverside? Is that, is that road Riverside? Or Highland Terrace?
Highland Terrace.
Highland Terrace, excuse me. Yeah, Highland Terrace. So there is a restriction to how close it gets to Highland Terrace. And then by the special permit, the rooftop mounted canopies could be allowed in other sections of town as well, but only up to the existing allowable height that the building can be itself. Next slide. Dimensional requirements, lot coverage. In essence, solar is, solar is going to fit into the same lot recovery, lot coverage requirements that already exist in, in building lots. If the solar is over a parking lot, it's, we're not, it doesn't get double counted as far as, as far as lot coverage. Solar, solar itself is permeable, parking lots are impermeable, but as far as lot coverage, if it's solar system, it's over the lot, it does not get counted twice as far as lot coverage. Then as far as the height restrictions, if a particular roof surface has a roughly gradient or equal to a fifteen-degree roof, we just don't want the solar, solar panels tilted more than one feet off the roof. And if it's less than that, sort of less than fifteen degrees, we don't want them tilted more than three feet, an angle that takes the top of the panels more feet, more than three feet off the roof. Then when we're talking about the building-mounted solar canopies, again, we are talking about those different districts, districts where they're allowed in the, the district over the other side of one-twenty-eight, I forget the, all the three different areas over there, we're going to allow it fifteen above the allowable building height. In any other districts where building-mounted canopies are allowed, it can only go up by the, the, the district height level of the building itself. Then we're going back to ground-mounted systems, the, in SRB and general residence, they can be tilted up and be eight, the top of it can be eight feet off the ground. In other residence, other districts, the top can be ten, ten feet off the ground, and there are specific reasons for that. Some of it has to do with visuals, some, actually, almost all of it has to do with visuals, but then also, in some cases, it has to do with what you can get as far as the efficiency out of the solar system itself. As far as the salt parking canopy, they're, they have to be of a certain height to be allowed cars, plows, fire engines, in some cases, to get under them, so they will be seventeen feet high. Now, is it seventeen feet at the highest, then it can go down lowest in the middle? I forget if there's a decreasing height on that right now.
No, seventeen feet from gray.
Fifteen feet from gray, no, at, minimum, even at the lowest part, minimum, seventeen feet?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about, sorry for not remembering that. Next slide. Setbacks, briefly touched on those. So the ground-mounted systems have to be, must meet within the setback requirement, so as this principal structure. So wherever the district is, rural residential, SRB, SLA, SRA, general residence, the, the system itself has to be at the principal structure distance, if, but at the same time, it can be allowed at the accessory structure distance away. But if it is that, if it is, if it's closer than the principal, principal structure, allowable distance, it has to have some screening to it. Then the parking canopies themselves, again, residential districts, we're talking about the setbacks of the accessory structures. One reason for just defining it that way is because parking canopies in residence areas, they could be, they're going to be over the driveway, and driveways are usually closer to the parking line anyway, so we're just going, we're going right to the accessory structure without any definite, other definition as far as the principal structure. And our residential, it's simply allowed by where the parking is allowed, is already allowed itself by five point one point three. Anything left after this? Not really, no. That's it.
Very good, very good. So we're just going to open up the public comment, and do we have attendees here? So. Is there an attendee on the other side?
Yeah, nobody's hand is raised, you might want to just say, if anybody has any questions, they can raise their hand, and then.
Yeah, yeah, if there are any questions.
I'm not going to read the ground rules for public hearings or anything like that, because there doesn't seem to be anyone here, or any hands raised, so if anyone has any questions, please raise your hand. And it seems like there's really no one that has any questions at this moment. Jean, do you have any questions right now, Artie?
No. I mean, we've put a lot of thought into drafting this, and we had several meetings about it, and I'm satisfied with it, no questions.
When is the next, you know, when is the next spot where this will be presented to the public? Usually we just have some cleanup to do before it hits the public. When's that, when's that time, at the, at the legal women voters meetings?
Well, that's just very, basically, we just answer questions about the article itself.
We don't change the article beyond.
Well, we're not changing the article.
We're not changing the article, no, no, just, just the presentation, just, we just need to.
Tweet it?
Yeah, we need some tweets on that.
Well, I don't know, you might, we, we, I'll have to ask the Select Board how much presentation they actually want when we meet with them on the sixteenth, if they want this kind of a presentation on the articles, or just want to ask us questions about them.
I thought it was a very good presentation.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
So I moved to close the hearing, right?
I second that motion.
And there's no additional information required?
Can you move to?
I don't know, do, do you have to move it? There's only three of us, so I don't. Jean, would you like to move to close the hearing?
Close the hearing on the zoning bylaw amendment for solar energy systems.
I second that.
Okay, and, so let's take a vote then, unless there are any other questions, so, Jean?
Did we already send, we're sending this, what are we doing now?
We are, we are, we are going to vote to.
To recommend it.
We're going to vote to send it to the warrant, and vote to recommend to town meeting that it be adopted.
Yes.
Are we voting to send it to warrant, to send it to the Select Board, for them to send it to the?
I have here, we're sending, what you said told me today, is that we're, we're voting to send the article in this final form for inclusion on the warrant, and vote to recommend its adoption.
Yes. Okay, I move as stated that.
Move, move what Natasha just said, I second that.
Okay. Okay, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so the motion carries, so, we have, we're going to send the article in its final form for inclusion on the warrant, and to recommend its adoption.
Right, so it will be on the annual warrant.
Sounds good to me.
Okay, we made it, we got it.
We made it.
It was close at times, but we did it.
So I think that that's our full agenda for today, so.
Is there a motion to close the meeting before Artie runs out of the building?
Unless, of course, Jean, do you, would you like to move to close the meeting?
I moved during the meeting.
I second that.
Okay, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So the meeting is closed, I'm going to end the meeting.